Through the September 19th, 2022, meeting of the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees at 6:00 PM, let the minutes show that a quorum is present with all members in attendance. Please rise for the invocation to be given by Ms. Harrell and the pleasure of allegiance and the honor of the Texas flag by Ms. Sharp.
Thank you for bringing your chair. Thank you for the time that you took. Thank you for allowing us to serve today. Yes, such blessing and purpose. So, we welcome the honor of the flag. I'm very proud of you. Uh, all. Good. Congratulations. This is the United States of America, to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one state under God, one individual.
Item two on the agenda is recognitions presented by Mr. Calvert.
Yes, sir. Tonight, we are honored to have Dogwood and Sorters Mill with us. So, last time I checked, D came before S, so we'll have Ms. Low come on up and recognize her campus and kudos.
You can stand right here. Okay. All right. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to recognize some of our family at Dogwood and part of the New Caney ISD family. I'm going to start off with our cafeteria, our cafeteria worker Sylvia Valencia. She has had 16 years in New Caney ISD, the last six at Dogwood. She is absolutely Ms. Silva's right-hand person, dedicated to excellence, can work any part of the cafeteria, smiles, knows our kids by name. We definitely could not feed all 760 kids in the amount of time that we do without Ms. Valencia. She is amazing and we love her. Thank you, Ms. Valencia. Okay. You may see a familiar face for our custodian Edith Velazquez is here again. She is our head custodian and she leads her team with such high expectations and standards and excellence. There is not anything that is not their job. Let me give you a couple of examples. Number one, we had a staff Easter egg hunt last year. Don't worry, Ms. Low, we're going to hide all the eggs tonight. Her team hid all the eggs for the, for the staff and for the kids from our staff. Number two, we are growing rapidly and we need to add chairs and desks. So, not only are they making sure desks are put in appropriately, they color code, like color coordinate them. The teachers have come up to me one by one, like, Ms. Low, I didn't ask for this and look what they did, above and beyond to make sure kids feel comfortable, that they have exactly what they need. So, thank you so much, Ms. Velazquez. All right. Our para-professional from Dogwood, Ms. Lisa Toledo. She is our computer para, but much more than that, a part of our specials team. The teachers see her as a teacher. She goes above and beyond, making sure it's not just the lesson that she was given, but really the needs for our students. Examples, our kids sometimes struggle with a new program. Ms. Low, let me bring that into the computer lab. I can help them in here. Helping kids type. Our first graders have made things with book creator in her classroom that just blow you away. She is very creative, things outside of the box, and really committed to excellence. And so, we appreciate her hard work, Ms. Lisa Toledo. Okay. So, next, I'm going to talk about the teacher that I chose. She couldn't be here tonight because she's sick. Her name is Joanna Garcia. I hired her a couple of years ago from Aldine. She's a Texas Tech graduate, but did have two years in Aldine. She brought such joy and just knowledge to our campus, always a smile on her face. Never, I don't have time for that. It's, yeah, let's see what we can do. This year, she's a team leader. She helps also spearhead some of our committees, like our reading incentives, just very positive and outgoing. Her kids grow tremendously. We have seen data that shows that not only pouring love into them, but some of the best instructional practices. So, so proud of her. One of the other best things, one of the other great things that she brought to our campus is our student that I'm also recognizing, Ms. Sofia Ibarra. She is a fifth grade student at Dogwood. She is in the dual language program, a member of our safety patrol, who this year have gotten extremely creative. They've got all kinds of ideas that we have implemented, color coding jackets to cones so that way kids can see quickly where they're going for car rider. She also was a member of our student panel that we had this year to give their voice, the student voice, to the teachers. Very well spoken, positive, outgoing, and just a hard worker. So, we're super, super excited to recognize her and have her as a member of Dogwood as well, Ms. Sofia Ibarra. So, these are our Dogwood recognitions, and I would just like to say, I am well aware that what you're going to see after does have some gifts, and they are amazing people too. So, you guys are going to have the gift of love tomorrow at our campus. And just please know, we love you guys very much. Thank you for all that you do. Now, you're going to walk out.
Tom Habe, are you and your fellow Tigers ready to come up, represent Sorters Mill?
Good evening, everyone. So, Ms. Low was teasing me. Thankfully, as principals, we, we find humor in the little things, but she actually had nominated me for giving her staff gift cards tomorrow. That was up here, wasn't that so kind? I love Ms. Low. All right. So, thank you so much just for this opportunity to recognize these incredible people at Sorters Mill. If you came tonight as part of our Sorters Mill family, can you please stand? I just love seeing just this level of support and the incredible people that we have that are, that are here to support these amazing, amazing leaders at SME. So, I would like to first start with Guadalupe Salinas. She wasn't able to be here this evening, but when you see Guadalupe Salinas, she is just like the grandmother that everyone wants at Sorters Mill, and that's really what we look at her as. She's just an incredible woman who serves in our cafeteria, and so she fills our students' bellies just with love, but also some good food. And I'm telling you, when you see her in the cafeteria, it's just instant smiles. So, she's a lot of fun, and I definitely wanted to recognize her this evening. The next person that I would like to recognize is a gentleman who is very difficult to get off of our campus tonight, because he is one of our custodians, and guess who was staying and trying to clean late? But that just truly shows his work ethic. So, I've written a little something about each of our people that I'd like to share with you. This is Robert, and Robert is a hardworking young man with a servant's heart. When Robert hits the doors of SME, he is on the go, and this guy does not stop. He has proven to be someone who takes his work seriously and wants to do his best no matter what. Robert is responsible and doesn't require others to check behind him, because it's done well the first time. So, no matter what his day brings, he doesn't complain. You know it's going to be, be a good day when you get a smile on his face, because he doesn't give them out often. He's one of those people, he's so driven, he's just on the go, right? So, do we get one? There it is. Look at that. I love it. So, listen, when he does, your smile brightens everyone's day. So, thank you so much. We appreciate all that he does for our staff and for our school. So, congratulations, Robert. Next up is Melody Martinez. Was she able to sneak in? Okay. We're going to save her until the end. She's on her way, but she got stuck, so we'll, we'll try to save her. The next one up then is Jessica Tully. She is our teacher at Sorters Mill that we want to recognize. Jessica Tully has her stamp all over SME, let me tell you. If there's a poster hanging on the wall that catches your eye, if there's a cute t-shirt, if someone is wearing something adorable or SME branded item, she has likely had a hand in creating it, just because that's who she is. Jessica is not only a master at creating beautiful designs, she has a classroom that radiates the beauty of an incredible group of first graders that she leads with excellence. And Jessica's greatest strength is building relationships with her students. She has a special knack for the ones who tend to be the most challenging, as we would call them, but she gets on their level, she allows each child to have a voice, and she just pours value into them with praise and encouragement. That's just who she is. She builds them up academically after being able to just raise up that self-esteem. It's really a neat thing to watch happen. She's a leader on campus with her ability to step in and fill a need without ever being asked. She's one of a kind, and we are grateful to have her at SME. So, congratulations, Jessica Tully. She has a cheering section. That's right. All right. And next up is Claire Saade. Woohoo. There's Claire. She's beautiful, one of our fifth graders at Sorters Mill. Claire Saade is deserving of the SME Outstanding Student Award, because she lives out the Tiger Way daily. She is respectful when speaking to both adults and her peers. She takes her turn, she is a good listener, and she models for others the expectations at all times. Claire is responsible. Her teachers say that she always comes to class prepared. She helps pass out supplies and even helps fulfill other students' class jobs when they're absent without even being asked. Claire is also safe consistently. She walks in hallways, she makes sure to model for her classmates to follow the expectations. I'm hearing a future teacher. Is that maybe what you want to be one day? Yes, that's so great. I love it. And she helps us to look for badges on all adults. Yes. Woohoo. Safety first, baby. Yay. That's awesome. So, see, we're all about safety at SME, even training our students to seek out those badges. Claire's even been nicknamed by her teacher as Claire Bear, because she is caring, compassionate, and most helpful. So, congratulations to Claire. All right. There's a happy, happy face at SME, that's for sure. All right. Well, I do want to take this opportunity to recognize Melody Martinez. She's here. Yes, she's here. Hello. Yay, you made it through the traffic. I'm so glad. All right. So, Melody is a very special little girl. I have to tell you, I have watched Melody grow from a nine-year-old little girl in my fourth grid classroom into a beautiful young woman who now plays a critical role on our campus. Melody Martinez is the first face that you see when you walk into Sorters Mill Elementary. She is the first person at the front door, ensuring our school stays safe and secure. She is that person who parents go to when they're having a great day and a not-so-happy day. What doesn't vary is Melanie, Melody's sheer determination and spirit to bring a smile to anyone and everyone who walks through our front doors. Melody is kind, she loves our students, and is always seeking ways to help others. Her gentle spirit is exactly what people are greeted with, regardless of how they walk in. And in all honesty, people usually leave happier than when they arrived, because Melody, she just has that way about her. It takes a special person to take on this role, and Melody does it beautifully. Tonight, we want to congratulate her for being a person of excellence at SME. Congratulations. All right. So, that is all of our Tigers that we want to congratulate this evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity to do so.
Congratulations. So, as an extra person, I appreciate yours. Oh, I have one. I wore a product. Hi. Hi.
Okay. At this time, we're going to move item five up. All right. Change that back. We're going to do item three on the agenda is open forum. The board will now hear comments from those persons who have signed up to speak. If someone has signed up, and we have one, I need to, Ms. Martinez, you can come up, and I'm going to have to read our letter again. The board encourages comments from citizens of the district or employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so at any time. At this time, the board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than five minutes. Remember, the board may not discuss any issues that are not posted on our agenda. If any issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during this meeting. In addition, the board has adopted a complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Policies are available on the district website at www.nucanyisd.org. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Good evening. As stated, my name is Yvonne Martinez. I'm actually a parent here in the district. I currently have a son who graduated last year and two students currently at Porter High School. And they were at KME and Woodridge Forest. The reason I came here this evening is because I actually wanted to acknowledge what has been going on at Porter High School. Last year around this time, we had this room full of a lot of angry parents, rightfully so, in regards to incidents that had occurred. And I just wanted to be heard today that that year significantly made a difference, definitely at Porter High School. Now, whenever there are certain events that may occur, even if it's a bus that's going to be late, the parents are notified immediately, right away, and so that parents are staying in, well, the school is staying in communication with the parents, so that they're not like looking like the bus is supposed to have been here at 5:00. Where is it? But those messages are actually coming out in enough time so that parents can prepare for whatever needs to be done. The other thing that I also think is very important has to do with last week, in which there was an incident on the campus. The school alerted the parents immediately, and I think it was really great that our students were willing to speak up and speak out, because I think that's the part that's most important, is when a student sees or hears something, that they go to the administrator so that it can actually be addressed. And because of that student, our students who informed administration, they were able to locate the student who had brought a firearm to the school, and they were able to actually get that taken care of at that moment. I think that that was important on how they handled it, because as most of you know, social media, you'll get one thing and then brrrr. So, for the most part, what occurred is the majority of the parents, especially those from Porter High School, when one parent did make a comment about feeling as if it was not taken care of correctly, the majority of the comments after that was pretty much, I think the school did a fine job, I'm glad of the way they handled it. And most importantly, the majority of the parents were glad that the school contacted the parents first, and then gave us the opportunity to make sure that we talked to our children about that incident that evening. I think it's very important that they continue with the process like that, because if the students were informed of it while they're on campus, I think that would have caused more of a problem, and we would not have been able to resolve that issue the way it was done in a quick and timely fashion. So, I just wanted to compliment Porter High School for what they are doing as it relates to maintaining communications with the parents, and I wanted the board to know that they are doing that in a very good way. The last thing that I would like to ask you guys, and I actually put my timer on, y'all know I usually don't do that, but I put my timer on, which all of a sudden, I can't get to now. Okay, there it is. Tomorrow will be the day when one of the Porter High School students, unfortunately, was murdered. And the reason I am speaking before the board is because my children and other children knew the victim, and they also knew the individual who did it. And one of the main things about our children today that I think is very important is unfortunately, some of them make mistakes that they can probably never come back from. And then, we still have students who are trying to figure out how to live with those incidents that occurred. As a parent, I will honestly say, I never expected to have that type of talk with my children as it related to people that they actually knew and people that were their age. So, I'm just going to ask everyone in the room, if you don't mind, I have 45 seconds left. Just please take about 30 seconds of your time right now and think about both of those students, and may those events ideally never occur in any of our schools again. 30 seconds starts now.
Thank you, Dr. Martinez. And I want to say, I just want to say thank you for recognizing the hard work our staff has put in effect right now. All right. Item five on the agenda is superintendent report by Mr. Calvert.
Yes, sir. I'd like to recognize Mr. Kandarko. He represents a committee that has been working on a big project for almost honestly going on three years now. When he, Mr. Holton and Ms. Heine were still in our middle school principal ranks, they brought an idea forward about a new schedule for our secondary campuses. Things happen, momentum starts, momentum stops, COVID comes across, just life happens, and so we are just now getting to this point. So, just want to recognize him and everybody that's gone through this process. It's definitely been a very informative process, and so I appreciate all y'all's hard work, the conversations, the open, honest conversations y'all have had with each other. So, I know, I'm looking forward to hearing what you've got to say, and I hope everyone else is too. Appreciate that, Seager.
Thank you, Mr. Calvert. And guys, thank you for allowing me to speak to you on behalf of the bell schedule steering committee that we composed of here, here in our school district over the last year. I do want you to know that the committee did consist of administrators, counselors, core teachers, CTE teachers, fine arts teachers, coaches, instructional coaches, sped teachers, EO coaches, and district instructional specialists from all of our secondary campuses in our district. The purpose of the committee that we were purposed with was to explore scheduling as a tool to support student success academically and extracurricularly. So, with this being said, the committee met three times throughout the school year last year formally, and we came together, and then we would go our separate ways and go visit with people on our campuses and get feedback from everyone that was within our departments or with, was, you know, like myself, I would meet with Mr. Holton and Ms. Heine for the high schools. And so, the teachers will do the same. After that, we met for a fourth time, and we voted on the scenario that we thought would be best suited for our school district. And so, in saying that, the, the schedule that we came up with is going to be a seven-period schedule, and all the classes are 55 minutes long, except for that one period in the middle of the day that consists with our lunches. And so, that period will be approximately 65 minutes long. So, that, that's where our varsity periods will be allocated to fit into that, that period right there, so that way they have at least 65 minutes to practice. That's from bell to bell, so by the time they get dressed, they still will have that 60 minute, 60-minute time allotted to them to practice during that time. So, some of the pros that we came up with in, when we decided on this schedule was that with our current schedule, our teachers don't get to see our students every day, and in this, in this schedule, they will. 9,295 minutes of instruction for all classes, so that would be an increase of almost 1,700 minutes a year for our core classes. Teachers will still get a 55-minute conference period every day, as opposed to a 90-minute conference now. There will be less discipline and attendance, we feel, issues due to students not sitting in filler classes. We'll have alignment with our surrounding districts. So, one of the, one of the problems that we have right now is when students move in, and we're on this totally different districts, it's hard to fit them in the classes that they were in in their previous schools. Also, we'll have alignment with state graduation requirements. This will allow our campuses to run pepperized schedule without impacting CTE funding. And then also, it'll extend time, like I, like I mentioned earlier, it'll extend time in our, in our periods, so it allows, to allow that time for athletic classes to have the full time allotted to them to practice. So, a couple of the cons, it's not perfect, of course, and some of the cons that we'll be losing when, if we were to move to this schedule, is there will be less student choices as we're going from a nine-period, you know, our kids get to choose from nine periods right now, and they will only have seven periods to choose from if we move to this schedule. There'll be a reduction in instruction time for elective classes that were previously double-blocked. And we'll currently, teachers again will lose about 25 minutes a day for conferencing, going from 90 minutes to 55 minutes, I'm sorry, 35 minutes. And then there'll be losses of some CTE funding, because we won't have as many choices to choose from. And then, one of the, you know, Mr. Holton being here, one of the cons at the moment right now is for New Caney High School, the travel times from New Caney High School to Pine Valley to use their fields for their baseball, softball, and track offseason times. So, and also, some of the things that we, we also talked about was the teacher time cost effectiveness. Currently, our teachers are engaged in instruction only 80.2% of their contract time, and this will increase to approximately 88% of their time. And then the students, again, we talked about student choice. Right now, our, our students on that nine-period a day can, can earn up to nine credits a year, and that gives them 36 credits over a four-year span. And the state is asking, you know, the state requirements for us to have 26 credits to graduate, so going from 36 to 26, and I know our district, we have 30, 30 credits that we require our kids to graduate with currently, so that would take us from 30 to 26. That's, that's basically what we, our, our talking points and our pros and cons of the, of the changing from the current schedule that we're currently on to that seven-period a day. So, I appreciate your time, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you guys tonight.
So, Ms. Kandarko, when it comes to, I mean, y'all know, y'all know me, my, my threshold's CTE. So, when you start talking about affecting the CTE programs and the CTE funding, that includes, you know, we're talking about the plumbers that were trying to instill plumbing class, the electricians, because we're going to be honest, not everybody is capable, is suited for college. So, the welders, the, you know, we need all these things, HVAC, electricians, what are we talking about that we're affecting when you start saying you're going to start affecting our CTE funding?
So, one, something that we discussed, myself, Mr. Ms. Monroe was involved in the conversation, also Mr. Holton, we discussed is some of those, some of those programs on our campus, they don't fill to capacity like they should be, some of those CTE classes. But at the same time, like you're talking about, some of our other classes, we have to turn kids away, because there's not enough room currently in some of those classes, like welding. I know at Mr. Holton's campus is very popular. On my campus, engineering and cosmetology, we have to turn a lot of those students away. So, something that we talked about was maybe if we have to dissolve some of our current programs that aren't filling our, some of our kids' needs, that we can also offer other sections for welding or for cosmetology or for engineering that allows them to go into those classes. What I, what I, I want to just reiterate to you is that we're not trying to take anything away from our kids. We're going to try to focus on the, the needs of our kids on our campuses through, through course selections. What do our kids need? What do our kids want? Because when we did look at course selections, we do see there are some programs that are, you know, that don't make all the time, but we still offer them, because we have that room in our schedule currently. So, we would dissolve some of those programs that, where we could use that space somewhere else to allow some kids to participate more in welding or in engineering or cosmetology, any of those classes that, that could use some more room to allow more kids to participate in.
Yeah. What effect teachers that current school has positions?
So, that's something that we would, we would dive into as we get closer to course elections. So, we get, we got, it's crazy that we're already thinking about next year, but the end of October, beginning of November is when we start course elections. So, in our timeline that we've lined out, if we do go to this, this new schedule, is that we will be doing our course selections, and then we will evaluate which teachers will be having to move from one section to another, or maybe from one campus to another.
And I'd just like to piggyback on that first question. You know, in our CTE programs, there's courses of study that lead to industry certifications. And so, I know one thing that Brooke has been focused on is let's put kids in programs that get them a career after college. And so, you know, that's a good place to start. So, like you said, HVAC, plumbing, electricians, those come with industry certifications. And so, those are the ones that, number one, they usually make, and number two, it leads to something after college. Those would be last per se. And then, like Seager just said, until we get course rec.
So in our timeline that we've lined out, if we do go to this new schedule, is that we will be doing our course selections and then we will evaluate which teachers will be having to move from one section to another or maybe from one campus to another.
And I'd just like to piggyback on that first question, you know, in our CTE programs, there's courses of study that lead to industry certifications. And so I know one thing that Brooke has been focused on is let's put kids in programs that get them a career after college. And so, you know, that's a good place to start, so like you said, HVAC, plumbing, electricians, those come with industry certifications. And so those are the ones that, number one, they usually make, and number two, at least it's something after college, those will be last per se. And then, like Caesar just said, until we get course requests, you really can't tell, and it's different between all three campuses, so there will be some natural attrition with, you know, West Fork Brewing, so there's gonna be some shuffling of the deck, but until you see what classes kids want, then you really don't know. Ms. Monroe, and she put her counselor's hat back on, and there's definitely a method to the madness and there's data that proves exactly what Caesar's saying, you know, we may have four kids asking for this class over here, but we're turning away 30 over there. And so there's definitely a balancing act there when you look at it a big picture perspective. So there's a plan moving forward, there's just some things that, step one is, okay, we're gonna do it, step two, course request, and we'll fill our way through it, but there's definitely a plan and a method to get into it for next year.
And coming back with just rearranging, something gets us with 20% more classroom time, more instruction, 700 minutes, I mean, that's a big line just by moving things around a little bit.
I also think it's important that our board's already been looking at the situation with the con concerning moving of the students across, you know, that's already, land's already been purchased, we're already involved in that, we're already moving forward with that, so we'll be able to get that taken care of relatively quickly. Also, in the extended time that I've spoken with the teachers, this is gonna allow us to focus, I think, sometimes when some of those classes stretched out a little bit further, we have a little bit more issues with discipline because we're actually, we know all, and I don't know as well as you guys do, but from what I listen to them, they talk about that extended period, losing them, their attention span by using this method here, we'll be able to get them back into that moment, be able to focus on quality teaching like that, getting more minutes, because at the end of the day, all these programs are important, but at the end of the day, I'm impressed because we're able to put our teachers in front of our students more than what we currently are. So I'm excited to see where it goes.
Yes, sir, I couldn't agree with you more.
Just a question, do we have any students, like, I know some schools in their health science programs actually have students that leave campus that go to hospital for certain hours for part of their certification. Do we have any students doing that, and how would the shortened class time affect that in obtaining certification?
So, yes, we do have some students that do currently leave now and, you know, to get their hours at the hospital, wherever they need to be going. And so one thing that we talked about, you could still be double-blocked if it needs to be, or if we put that at the beginning of the day to where they're there when the day starts, and, you know, or even earlier before school starts, and then that way they're there and then they still make it back to campus in time for the next period. You know, and with our older kids, they do have a lot of room in their schedule because of all the credits they've already earned, and so having that extra schedule, that extra period wouldn't affect them with all the classes that they need for graduation. Thank you all.
I do wanna take just a second here to talk about last week, since we're talking about CTE and everything going on, we had a really good East Montgomery County Fair this past week. A lot of people showed up, a lot of money was raised for these students that raise animals and make projects, and, you know, I just wanna compliment our, both our, all three of our schools because we had our first West Fork Junior FFA Animal Make the Sale this past weekend. So just wanna say, great job to all of our schools, all three high schools and middle schools, and just good deal, thank you. Item four on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet and close meeting under authority of Texas Government Code 551.074 for the purpose of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, and Government Code 551.072 for deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Any action as a result of the closed session discussion will take place after the board reconvenes in open meeting. The time is 6:34 PM. Ended its closed meeting at 7:15 PM. It will now reconvene in open session. Item six on the agenda is reports and proposals of board members.
No, I'll share, I'm super excited. Back in June, I think, my colleagues on the board nominated me to be a nominee for the Region 6A vacancy on the Tasby Board. So I went through that process and I was selected by the nominating committee to represent Region 6. And so that will be finalized at the delegate assembly later this week. So, super excited to represent Nukeni ISD, thank you, in Region 6. So much of what we do here, we feel like is dictated at the state level, so I'm excited to play a role being in partnership with other boards to be a voice there and help make other changes. So, thank y'all for nominating me, I'm super excited.
Item seven on, or, is it more? Item seven on the agenda is a consent calendar consisting of consideration of minutes, consideration of finance reports, consideration of purchasing reports, consideration of personnel reports, consideration of instruction reports, consideration to update board operating guidelines, and consideration of national incident management system. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Motion has been moved and seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is approved. Item eight on the agenda is consideration of resolution submitting nominees as candidates for the election of the Montgomery County Appraisal District's Board of Directors 2022-2023 term. Mr. Calvert?
Yes, sir, it's the time of year for y'all to nominate an individual to represent Nukeni ISD on the Montgomery County Appraisal District Board.
Are there any questions? Motion has been moved and seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're gonna skip item nine, no action is needed. Item 10 on the agenda is consideration of approval to award construction contract to Porter Elementary School replacement project 101-2018 to Purcell Construction. Mr. Calvert?
Yes, sir, we're gonna recommend that Purcell be the general contractor for the Porter Elementary School replacement. This is the fourth and final project in bond 2018, so that school is scheduled to be open in August the 24th, so Purcell's ready to get. They are the firm that did the expansion at Woodbridge Forest, they've done that one, I think they did one other one, but very easy to work with, minimal issues. On this particular bid, they did commit the lowest price overall out of all the bids, great relationship with them, so no issues at all.
Is there a motion? Motion is moved and seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is approved, Purcell will build Porter Elementary replacement. Item 11 on the agenda is consider and take possible action to pursue actions for contract abandonment by a teacher at Nukeny Elementary presented by Ms. Gates.
Good evening, the agenda item that you have before you is regarding an educator that submitted a request to resign from a contracted position, and we believe that good cause does not exist, and so that's what you have before you this evening so that we can pursue a sanction if the board chooses to support that.
I move that the board reject the attempted resignation of a teacher at Nukeny Elementary because the teacher lacked good cause to resign after the penalty-free resignation deadline, and that the board authorize the superintendent or designate me to seek sanctions against the teacher with the State Board of Education.
Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is approved. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned, the time is 7:20 PM.